Welcome to the Silver Lake Regional School Committee Meeting, Thursday, April 9th, 2015. We are being videotaped by CHAT tonight, which is the Carver Halifax Access Television. I just want to point out that Mrs. Blackwood, Mr. Mulcahy, and Mr. Dupill are attending a required training for sheltered English Immersion English learners, and they will be here as soon as they get out. They are actually in their program until 7:00 PM. At this time, is there a motion for the school choice public hearing?
Chair, I would move that we open the school choice public hearing at the appointed time and date.
She can hear us.
I move that we open the school choice public hearing as a motion.
I'd like to second that motion.
Is there any discussion about opening the school choice public hearing? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Madam Chair, I would, to start it off, I would, correct me if I'm wrong, John, I would move that Silver Lake not participate in school choice for the 2015-2016 school year.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Madam Chair, I would move we close the school choice public hearing portion of our meeting.
Second.
You lost, Maureen. Jason, no you.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Okay.
Okay. We do have two members participating tonight by remote participation. Mrs. Springer and Mr. Guittaboni are with us via Skype. They are only available with us for a short time, so I would entertain a motion to move the 2014-2015 budget out of order.
So moved.
Second.
Can I have your speech, Jim?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? All right, Mr. Tuffy.
Did somebody have the numbers?
It's included in the package.
All right.
What color sheet is that?
White. It sticks up because it's white.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I would, John has asked me to kind of organize this end of April meeting. I would, I hope there'd be a motion to reconsider the 2014-2015 Silver Lake budget.
Second the motion.
Second.
Okay. Jason, Jason, Maureen, second.
I'm not talking to you guys.
All right, so there was a motion on the floor to reconsider?
The 2014-2015 Silver Lake budget.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Okay, now we have to have a motion to amend the 2014-2015 Silver Lake school budget by presuming the amount of money that was overpaid, that we expended for school for ice, snow and ice. Somebody got that number?
$160,000.
Okay, straight, 160, okay. Our motion would be in order.
So moved.
We already moved, you second. You're doing a great job, Maureen.
Is there any discussion?
It's the delay between countries, or whatever word. Okay.
Seeing none, all those in favor of amending the 2014-2015 Silver Lake Regional School Budget by $160,000?
They notified the three towns of that, of that motion. By the, by the add that.
He says he would like to notify the three towns of that motion.
Yeah, we have to, because they have to put in their town meetings. Yes. Okay, we're gonna add to the motion that we're going to take that 160,000 from our E&amp;D money and hope some of it gets replaced by the federal disaster money. Okay? I think we can vote.
Second needs to confirm that.
Yeah, we took it as a friendly amendment and part of the main motion.
All right, is there any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Now, the next motion would be to amend the Silver Lake budget to come up with the grand total, adding the 160 to the 2014 budget, and that number Christine is? Yeah, a little pressure.
A little pressure, yes. Give me a moment.
Okay. Silver Lake 2014 budget by the amount she's gonna say. Yeah, and she's gonna give it to you, I hope. Okay. All right, so the new budget for fiscal 2015 is the number that Christine just read? And Lisa, wanna read it again? Madam Chair, since we only have nine votes here. And we need 11, I would suggest a roll call vote, so we can be clear that we got sufficient votes.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second, and John wants to do this by roll call, so I'm gonna start with Maureen. Maureen?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
That completes that end of it, right, John?
Yes.
Casey, I have a question.
Yes, me.
Who's missing from the committee tonight?
Ed and Joe.
Okay.
So we, we have?
Thanks for that, Maureen.
Let's see, wait a minute, hang in there. Okay, as long as we hang on to nine votes here, we can run the show. I don't know why they both have to vote.
I think you got your nine votes, if you're only missing two people.
Yeah.
That is correct.
We have nine in the room.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anytime.
That's it.
All right, now we're going to continue on with our regularly scheduled agenda, and we have some student presentations.
Okay, anything you need to vote on, good for 20 more minutes, and then I'm done. I'll excuse myself, is there anything else you need to vote on, maybe a form?
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you have anything else, Casey?
I don't believe we do. Um, actually, can we talk about the potential day change for the May committee meeting before I lose you both?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
All right, is there a motion to move that particular part of the agenda out of order?
I'll make that motion to take the May school committee meeting out of order.
Second.
Motion on that.
There's a second, any discussion?
Second.
Why?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Because of the two town meetings. So.
All right, so, in order to accommodate a possible second night of the Plimpton Town meeting, our school committee meeting would conflict with that, so we should probably think a vote on changing our date.
Goodnight, sweetheart. I'll see you later.
So.
And, Maureen?
That is far apart.
That is set all over eastern Massachusetts.
So would everybody be all right with May 21st as a rescheduled date for the May Silver Lake meeting?
The table we did?
It's a Thursday.
Casey?
Yes.
Are you aware that we have an obligation for negotiations with the PACID?
Yes.
Okay.
But we are obligated at five?
Okay, second maybe.
We can, we'll swing it.
Make that clear before we begin, yes, okay.
We'll swing it.
Gotcha.
What do we think, May 21st?
May 21st.
At what time?
At 7:00 PM.
I'm afraid.
That good for you, Mark?
Yeah, well, it's not gonna be any better than the other dates, but I'll do my best.
Okay.
Still have control of the schedule, I'll work on it.
Yes, we wanna keep it from the.
Yeah, not me as a guess.
All right, so is there a motion to change the May school committee meeting from May 14th to May 21st?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. And I do not believe we're going to be taking any more votes tonight. That would mean?
I don't think we have any votes, we have 11 votes.
No, I don't think so.
We could take, you have to accept a minute or something.
Well, but there's nothing that would take a two-thirds.
No, that's correct. That I know.
All right.
Sounds good, I'll be glad to report on how well the Silver Lake Band and Silver Lake Chorus perform tomorrow at the Disney Embassy Center in Hana, and I will give you an update at the 21st May meeting.
Thank you, Mark, we appreciate it.
Have fun.
I'll try to get some video for you, thanks. Have a good night.
You too.
Night, Mark.
So, Casey?
Yes?
I know Steve is probably leaving after we sign off, so I'm not sure that you need me to stay, I did wanna address that letter, um, if you want, if we could ask you to take that out of order?
I'm still here if you wanna take something else out of order.
All right, so is there a motion to take the Building and Grounds report out of order?
So, second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Everybody should have a copy, it's on the yellow paper. We received a request from the Town of Kingston, Town Administrator Robert Fennessy, about a Jones River project, improvement project, and it deals with a piece of land owned by Silver Lake. It would be my recommendation that we forward this to Building and Grounds, since they are meeting that.
Stand in case, stand in area.
We have a letter from the Town of Kingston's Town Administrator Robert Fennessy regarding a Jones River improvement project and a piece of land that is owned by Silver Lake. It's my recommendation that we forward this to Building and Grounds and put it on the agenda for next month.
Madam Chair, we don't need a motion because it isn't.
No, he wants it, I take it away.
We don't need a motion, I think the instruction of the chair is perfect, because it wasn't given under 48 hours, and we don't wanna get into open meeting violations, so the chair lady?
Yeah, I just want.
Sent it to the official board, and I would recommend we leave it at that.
Okay.
Because we don't wanna get letters from them.
Right.
Thank you, Maureen.
But I wanted to acknowledge the letter, but it didn't come in very late. All right, and I think that.
We'll deal with that at Building and Grounds next, the week, yeah, next week.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
It's actually the date of, it's actually the date of that meeting.
I will, I will. Okay, guys, I'll sign off so Steve can leave, have a great night.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark and Maureen.
And we wanna, we wanna full report of the new grandchild.
Oh, absolutely, with pictures and everything. Goodnight.
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 Let it off, let it off.
All right. Continuing on with our agenda, we have a student presentation by the robotics team. Mr. Mulcahy, since you are now present, would you like to introduce them?
Thank you, I apologize for being late.
No, we totally understand.
I'd like to introduce our robotics team over the last couple of years. Our robotics team has made an appearance to conduct a demonstration with the robot. This is the third different robot that we've had here for the demonstration. Silver Circuit has grown exponentially over the last couple of years, and has experienced tremendous success. They competed in two major events in the past couple of months. One in Reading versus other schools, and the Rhode Island District FRC competition at Bryant College. The team had its highest ranking in the years that they have been in existence, finishing 19th out of 39 teams of the competition, which is outstanding. Tonight, we have here Karen Hope, grade nine, Kingston. Connor Lee, grade junior from Kingston. Carter Benz, a sophomore from Kingston, and Peter Morgan, a sophomore from Kingston, to demonstrate along, this team, just before they start, they're gonna do a short presentation for you, obviously. This team is coached by four dedicated teachers, Matt Mello and Nick Passerina, both from our science department are here, and Luke Schreifer from our tech ed department is here as well. Stephanie Rici, who's not here now, but she might come a little later, is also one of the coaches from our English department. This team and its coaches really embody what the STEM initiative is intended for, science, technology, engineering, and math, and is one example in the direction that we intend to head regarding our curriculum. So without further ado, our, very, I'm very proud of our robotics team, so here we go.
Every year, the company FIRST, for inspiration and recognition of science and technology, issues a challenge to the now 6,000 schools that compete in their programs. This year, the competition was to lift these totes and stack them up to six high in the most quick and efficient manner possible. FIRST seeks to not only engage students in engineering and technology, but also to get them excited about the developments in the field.
So our team is Silver Circuit, we're three years old, this is our third year, our third robot, but we did have a lot of graduating seniors that had started the team, so this year was really about rebuilding from the core out, so we have lots of members this year that are rookie members, so this is their first year, and a lot of our experience this year was to learn new things and learn different things to help each other, and the fact that we were able to do that in that very stressful six-week period was something we're very proud of, because we all came together with this common goal, and we're all very happy that we were able to achieve such a successful robot. It is our most successful robot in a way, because we went from placing 40th at our first competition to placing 19th at our second, and that is the highest we've ever placed as a team, so we're very proud of that.
We set a few basic goals, and we aimed for a very sturdy design, and our main goals were a sturdy design, to come home with one award, which is in the imagery board at our first competition, and our third goal was?
Was to be selected for an alliance, which we sadly did not achieve, but we came close, considering our standing.
So, this is a basic design, as Karen pointed out, our task was to lift these totes here, so we focused on sort of a chain design to lift as many totes as possible, lift multiple totes at a time, and we faced a lot of challenges with this in the first competition, with having how the boxes felt, we had issues actually lifting them onto the hooks, but between the two weeks, between the two competitions, we managed to figure a system to actually get our design to function as we fully intended, which I can demonstrate right now.
Our program is entirely self-funded through fund wick raisers we run and through our major sponsors, Entergy, the Halifax Cultural Council, and a STEM camp which we volunteer at. Thank you for watching us, and we'd be happy if any of you would like to meet us sometime next year during the build season to see how we work.
Thank you very much. I have a good rest. All right, do we have a student advisory?
No.
All right, at this time, is there any public participation? Seeing none. Approval of the minutes from March 12th and March 26th, 2015. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
A motion for the minutes.
Both sets?
Both, yes.
March 12th and March 26th. So there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? There is no curriculum owner scheduled for tonight, so on to the principal's reports, Mr. Mulcahy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You saw wonderful about our team and the first part of my agenda. Second is I just distributed our, the updates to the Student Handbook, the 15-16 Student Handbook. The changes, if you look through, the changes that have been made in the book are highlighted in red, you'll notice that any, some of the questions that you might have regarding formatting and page breaks and that type of, those type of corrections will happen after the book is approved by you guys, after the contents of the book. We'll do some of the formatting changes before we send it off to the publisher, so to speak. On the cover page, I've highlighted some changes that deserve recognition or notice tonight. What has been discussed before with the committee, the diploma requirements now list the fourth year of math, which is the big one, which, with the class of 2016, which starts. You know, there's other updates with, with that, there's 10 credits for wellness now, and 24 credits in electives in addition to the 16 credits in math, so that changes, the math credit has a ripple effect or a domino effect, which you have to changes as far as the credits are concerned for diploma requirements. The second update that I wanted to talk about is we are, we are looking to not print progress or midterm, midterm reports next year. Currently, the practice is to print them and distribute them to students, and they take them home. Considering that we utilize roughly 4,800 sheets of paper for progress reports over the course of the year, and that our parents have access to live grades via Power School, we feel that this is an item that can be phased out. Many schools that, many of my colleagues that I work with across the sub-shore, many of their schools do not print progress reports, they don't print report cards, they try not to print anything, save on paper. We're gonna start off with progress reports. In addition, I would send a phone call and email home to parents to alert them of the halfway point, the term, and let them know that when they view the grades at a certain time, that that would be the progress report. And in addition, just for this transition phase, any parent that did request a copy of the progress report could receive one from us. So I'm trying to transition into, you know, we talk about savings and saving paper, of going paperless, not that we're completely paperless, but this is a step in that direction. I think the groups that I've worked with, you know, in particular the PTO, the school council, have talked about this at length and are in full support of going in that direction, so I think we start with progress reports, we would continue to print report cards, but that would be the next step in the phase, not next year, but the year after. So we'll see how the progress report item works. So we wanted to mention that in the handbook. In addition, information regarding impact testing, our impact testing is a tool that Lees District used as a baseline neurocognitive testing system to aid in the assessments of head injuries or concussions. We do that throughout the district, in middle school up through high school, seventh, ninth, and 11th grade, we run an impact test on all of our students, not just our athletes, so we could have a baseline in helping, and this is working with the medical field, to have a baseline to where we need to be educationally with students that experience head injuries. So that is going to be in the handbook as well. There was really, there was a little bit of language in the athletic handbook regarding that, but I think it needs to be in the main body of the handbook for people to read, because it impacts not just athletes, it impacts everyone. And finally, lab safety language, not finally, I'm sorry, lab safety language, this was a process that has been done with each science teacher in the past on their own, they would do their own lab safety agreement that they talked about with their students and had it go home and be signed and returned. Again, to save paper and to formalize the process a little bit more, we include, we wanna include it in the handbook. Students sign off in the handbook, and parents sign off in the handbook, so having that lab safety agreement or language of it in the handbook would help out with that process. Finally, we wanna include the update, I've talked about it at earlier meetings, our visitor, new visitor pass system, or visitor policy to reflect our new photo ID program through HERO, will be utilized down front, so the language that will be in the handbook will represent, parents that, or any visitor that comes in the building will have to take a photo ID, that will be on their badge that they put in and will sign into our system. We wanna include that in the handbook as well. So, if you, if you notice, Mr. Drew, go ahead, sir. One, one last piece, just so you know, just a reminder from last year, we removed the athletic handbook, and that is online through Family ID, and that's what parents utilize, and look at the athletic handbook, so that you won't find in this current handbook we did to save money in the printing process, because it adds an additional 20 to 25 pages, and we're charged per page. Sorry, Mr. Drew.
Madam Chair, you don't need to vote on this tonight, or do you?
No, this is too, good question, I'm giving this now, we need to vote for next month.
In the spirit of my co-arts throughout the world, on page three?
Yes.
It can be done electronically, but it also can be done the old-fashioned, traditional way.
The progress report?
Yes.
Yes, that's what I mentioned. If they wanted to print out, they request it, we would certainly give it to them.
In the spirit of my millions of people who haven't been hacked, because they don't have anything to get hacked.
That's why I put that in there, if you want a hard copy, we'll provide it to you.
What's the actual date this is gonna be in effect, this new handbook?
For next year, 15-16.
So on page 13, shouldn't this joy plaque be deleted from that?
As a superintendent? That's why it's in red, I believe.
Okay, I thought that was a change.
No.
So it did. So stuff in red is what then?
That's gonna be stuff that's either changed or will be changed.
Oh, will be?
Yeah.
Is there any other changes regarding social media, such as like the I have on page four, we have social responsibilities, so social media addressed another place, are there any changes?
That's under our acceptable use policy, I believe.
Social responsibilities?
Yep.
Social media, have you mentioned any, have any other changes regarding that?
No, not currently.
Okay. Sorry.
So read through it, and if you have questions for next meeting, certainly, or in between, you know, obviously, email me or call me, if you have any questions, you can forward with the handbook. A vote will be, I will be requesting your approval next, at next month's meeting. Okay, quickly, just an activities update, since the last time we met. Student council returned from the state convention in Hyannis, taking home the gold council of excellence award, which is the highest honor a student council can earn. of excellence award, which is the highest honor a student council can earn, while also earning the top 10 project awards, so that's four or five years in a row now that our student council's been up there with, as a leader in the state as far as being recognized. So congratulations to them. To stay on, student council, they organized our winter carnival week, which took place the week of March 16th to the 20th. There were minute-to-minute activities in the cafeteria as well as karaoke in the cafeteria. And there was also the themed days during the week, the dress-up days, all going towards spiritual points for each class. They also started something this year called Penny Wars, which they donated into different jars, which the, with the proceeds going to local charities, so I'll have an update for you on which charities they actually have gone to. Finally, oh, to, to conclude the week, they, we had the spring dance held here at the high school, again sponsored by the student council, which was successful, we had about 600 students in attendance, so that's a very well-attended event every year. Our junior prom was held at Lombardo's in Randolph and took off on the big coach buses on March 27th. I think everybody had a great night, I saw many of you people here, visiting the red carpet event, which the public loves and, and is, is a very, it's a great event for people to come to. We have, the gym's full, I mean, you know, the stands are full, we have a ton of people here, with great cooperation with the Kingston Police Department, Halifax Police and Plumpton Police, they all come here, we get a, a, we have a motorcycle or a car lead us to the highway, everybody pulls off to the side, they wave to the buses, it's a real big gala, so, very proud that it went so well and, and I think the junior class had a great time at the event. We finished up, to go from that real high note, we finished up MCAS last week, March 31st, day from 1st to April 2nd. The staff, the students, did an outstanding job with the flipping, the rotation of the schedule, the switching of rooms, and making sure that everything went smoothly, and I'm really proud of the whole school when we have testing days like that because it's tough on everybody, but everybody just, you know, gears with it, does the best they can, and carries through, do an outstanding job. Term three ends tomorrow, we had pushed the term dates back due to all the snow days, so term three ends tomorrow and report cards for term three will be distributed next Friday, April 17th, 2015.
Madam Chair, just to say, to Princealua, South Shore folk enjoyed hosting two of your teachers at our Planet for Life program on Tuesday.
That was Tuesday this week, yes.
Yeah, I hope that they were successful on Wednesday's star and you might do something to implement it as we find it very successful.
That's a great point, Mr. Creed, I think we're going to plan on hosting something possibly on a smaller scale here next year to start for that, so, thank you for bringing that up.
Well, thank you for having me come.
Yep.
I knew it was okay because when they saw me, they didn't, they didn't know I worked there.
That's all I had.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DePio?
Yes, thank you. So the first thing I want to talk about is Great East Music Festival that's coming up on May 29th. That is our grade eight band and honors chorus, participate in Great East Music Festival. They leave the middle school around 7:30 a.m., the day of performance and will happen at the Acton Coxboro Regional High School. The judges will give awards based on the score, which is on their performance, and from there they will go to Canipie Lake Park and then return to Silverlake Middle School at 8 o'clock. One of the things I need to do is ask permission because it is out of state at Canipie Lake Park, so I'm pressing permission to allow this field trip.
I would so move to give permission for that trip.
I would second that motion.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close, extensions?
Thank you. Next is some activities, so the peer leaders at our building, and it's, they had proposed challenge days from April 13th to April 17th, is a student proposal that they worked on and pulled together, and that would start on Monday. On Monday, the first day would be happiness day, and they would spread the word and say something that would make someone else and themselves happy. Move on to Tuesday, which is compliment day, so compliment to someone else. Wednesday would be equality day, and then Thursday would be an act of kindness day, similar to pay it forward. And Friday is fix-it day, so, and throughout each of these themes, there are things that will go on during the day, so for instance, acts of kindness day, they'd wear neon clothing, there'd be a song in the morning to kind of represent the act of kindness, and then throughout the day, there'd be acts of kindness. And then they have rubber challenge, I should say, and every time they see an act of kindness, they would take one off and give it to the person that they saw with an act of kindness. So it's just kind of a positive message throughout the whole week. Again, it was a student idea, student-driven, and very excited about it. So that's our peer leaders. I'm going to bring them next time, they're going to talk about it after the 13th and 17th, and they'll talk about it to the school committee. Couple other things I'd like to talk about, we have our art show coming up at the Kingston Library, our artists, our eighth-grade artists, they're calling it Two Years in the Making, will be handing their artwork on May 1st, and it'll be there throughout the month of May, and they will be having a reception on May 16th from 2 to 4, so if anyone could make it. You'll see our young artists at the Kingston Library at their reception, and their artwork is going to be there. So I also want to thank our art teachers, who's Ms. McGee, for her hard work on that. We also have the history beat that's coming up, we have five finalists going to the state, the regionals finals, Amanda Kona, Riley Herman, Jake Holmes, Michael Howard, and William Tuzik. So I want to congratulate them on making it to the finals, and that will be on April 11th in Boston. I will keep you posted as to their outcomes on April 11th. Also, from our building, Massachusetts Council for Social Studies has awarded Dan Bracken the Williams Spratt Award for Excellence in Teaching Middle School Social Studies. This award is presented annually to one educator in Massachusetts who has demonstrated exceptional ability in the field of social studies. The award will be presented to Dan on May 20th at the Sheridan in Norwood, so I want to congratulate Dan Bracken. We have had MCAS going on all week, so we have seventh and eighth grade MCAS, which we finish it up tomorrow, so our students have been working very diligently, and the first piece, which is the long comp, which started last week and then finished up the makeup, was this week, so we have 100% anticipation on the first piece that is completed, and our attendance has been great during MCAS, so I do thank all the parents and the communities for supporting us through the MCAS sessions, and Friday, 5th, we'll finish the LA portion. Master schedule, so just quickly on master schedule, we're starting to receive the elementary, the, from the three elementary schools, their course selections, we're entering it into our database. We've already entered the eighth grade information into our database, course selections, and we are starting to place the eighth grade students onto teams. So we are very positive about the way it's progressing and our timeline's progressing, and we do foresee that we will be putting students on teams prior to step-up day like we wanted, like we always want to, and have student schedules delivered to them before the end of the year. So it is progressing in a positive way. Lastly, is our student handbook, which I handed out the changes, so these are our handbook changes, we highlighted them in yellow, so when you have an opportunity, you go through that student handbook changes, I'd just like to make notes of, just pull my outline out, so apologize for that. So the first is the daily rotation schedule, I just highlighted in yellow what we're looking to change, it just changes where they report to when they come into the school, so they'll be reporting to homerooms for next year. If you move on, you'll see on page eight and page nine, that is the attendance policy, we included some of the language that came out, the chapter 222, and we wanted to make sure it was in there so that the parents and the community and the students are aware of what the attendance laws are and what we as a middle school have to follow, and so that has been added in. And then if you continue to move through, we added the policy about physical, physical restraint, and again, we took the pupil absence notification program, which is what the state, it's on the state DESI webpage, and we put that in. We also put in on page 38, a school parent-student learning compact, so I included that. And then on, on the last page, this is our sign-off page where the parents sign off on all the things that they've read, and we are adding that they have the limited access to their, their drive, which gives them the shared docs and email, and that's the last piece, just to notify parents and make sure they're aware that, that Google Suite has the drive, email account, things like that.
I'm sorry, can I ask, is this something that we would vote on next month as well?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Can I ask one more thing?
Sure.
Should we send a letter to Dan Bracken acknowledging his award, congratulating him?
I second that.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close, extensions? All right, reports of special committees, Silverlake Education Association?
Hi, yes, Jessica Hill, I'm president and BLA teacher here in Silverlake High School. I have an email from my colleague and SLEA president, Kim Orcutt, to just share with you. She said, "Good evening, though Casey Rukowski, the SLEA VP of High School and I have tried to attend all the school committee meetings this year, both of us are unable to attend tonight. However, I still wanted to touch base with you all. I wanted to express again my thanks to the towns and to this committee for working so diligently on next year's school budget. With regard to the teachers' commitment to work with the committee and the towns, Jessica Hill has began working on the idea she presented at last meeting. She has reached out to the staff and already has some volunteers who are going to work on finding ways that we as teachers can work to be more fiscally effective in the classroom. We will be happy to work with and share our ideas at the committee and, with the committee and administration in the future. We will be happy to work, and, sorry, my apologies. In addition, the SLEA support staff is looking forward to beginning negotiations with the school committee, and the representatives for the safety committee are looking forward to meeting at the school committee's representatives. Again, many thanks goes out to all the members of this committee for your hard work on next year's school budget, and we look forward to next month's meeting. Many thanks, Kim Orcutt." So, we had talked, I wasn't sure if I was going to be able to come this evening either, I don't know if you noticed, I had my rugrats in tow. Fortunately, I cashed in on a personal favor and Mike Vega is also custodial slash on-call babysitter downstairs, so I will be staying just for a short while longer, but with regards to the response from the staff here at Silverlake about finding ways to try to tighten that budget and, and increase help from the inside out, I brought it up at a faculty senate meeting on Monday, and there's administration present, and then it's open to any, you know, teachers who would like to come and just talk about issues. There were some volunteers and some interest there as well, so I'm hoping to touch base with the towns after voting in town meetings and things like that, and kind of some dust settles, and I mentioned, I heard that like summer was kind of thrown out as the ideal time as to when we can start to begin conversations for next year, so we're not in the same position where we're cutting things down, so there is some very sincere hopes to follow through with, with those, you know, intentions, and I plan to see that out, so, you know, I welcome any guidance or comments if, you know, you'd like to reach out to me as well, I'm certainly welcoming any advice I can get.
Mr. DePio?
I thank you and the president for comments and memo, but I would make a suggestion, there are two years left on the contract, and I would hope that the union would consider one of those two years to give up their steps and lanes, so maybe this list that assistant superintendent gave at the last meeting could be considered. I'm not talking about the cohorts, I'm talking about the lanes and steps, because the next couple of years aren't going to be any better. I know people look at people retiring, but when the budget moves up 1.2 million a year, that's a lot of retirements. So I hope that the union might consider one of the next two years that are left in the contract, and I hope that, I was going to say this, if the president was here, you could pass on my thought, and I can be contacted anytime, the old-fashioned way on the phone. Thank you.
I'll probably express.
Thank you. And thank you for reading, Kim Stager. Administrative review?
No meeting?
The senior grounds we already did out of order, career and technical education?
Madam Chair, I can say something, I, I hope that, you know, the Silverlake Automotive team are going to the finals for the state in automotive, my sources tell me, which will be done, I believe, in Attleboro, and if they win that, they go to Dearborn, Michigan, I believe. All expenses paid by the Ford company.
Correct, and I was going to mention that, see, that was going to be next month's report, but thank you for mentioning it, and I'll just make a note that one of the students is Mr. Jake Hatch, who was Paula Hatch's son on the team.
Very excited, both boys happy.
It's a, it's a tremendous opportunity.
Tremendous, yeah, they've done a great job.
I congratulate them, and it's a...
We'll have a strong CTE visit next month.
And I might add to the administration, it doesn't cost the budget a dime.
That's right, that's, that's perfect.
It's a good show, they put on a good, it used to be in Washington DC for years, but then after 9/11, they, like everything else, they...
Right.
So, congratulations.
They've done an outstanding, they've done an outstanding job.
All right.
Chairman's report. I do not have anything to add that hasn't already been discussed, but I would like to remind us all, since our next meeting isn't till May 21st, that town meetings are coming up and we all need to be advocates for what we voted for. Legislative agent?
Yes, couple of things, just to remind everybody, the, the budget in the House will probably be taken up the week of April 27th. The senate looks like May 20th, and the joint budget not till June 15th. Now, there's two problems that have arisen, the governor has an early retirement program on the table, which would affect 4,300 state employees, he's looking to buy them out. If, and it looks like that might be in trouble right now, that be the case, that would affect the revenue package for 2016 tremendously, so how they will adjust to that is anybody's guess. And also, the senate no longer wants the joint committees of House and Senate, because the senate is outnumbered about three to one. So until they get their own structured process together, they can't move forward on the numbers because nobody wants to talk to anybody. So it'll be interesting how that whole process works out. The governor really needs this early retirement program to work, to balance the budget. The revenues are coming in pretty good, this is a good month because people not only are getting their taxes back, but the big people like John will be paying his estimated tax next Wednesday, I'm sure, and so those are the things we'll, we'll watch, but see if the revenue keeps pace.
John, when you say the early retirement package or, or initiative might be in trouble, what, what's the, what's the issue there? People aren't elected to do it, or?
No, no, the legislature has to approve it, and, and the House is getting pressure from the unions not to, so how that works out, I don't know, because if not, the governor would have to lay off 4,300 people, and then you're paying unemployment compensation, and it's, it's a, it's a different ballgame. But I would say this, to my distinguished teacher friend, I've met with Governor Baker's people, some of them not the governor, but no new taxes, he said it, and he's going to keep doing it, good or bad, I don't necessarily agree with that, but he doesn't look like he's going to waver at least for the first term. And when, I'm told, anytime somebody puts it on the table, he says, he goes back to President Bush one, read my lips, so I, I think that would be a long shot, you never say never, but, so the revenue packages, and they're up in the air, what they can support with their signing up, that's all I got to say.
Someday you're going to give us good news.
If there's good news, I'll give bad news. Then I may go, if I left today, you wouldn't have a quote, until Joe came. Jason, Jason the most important person here.
He is, but we appreciate everything you do, it's just, at some point, you're going to give us good news, not follow by that.
Why my face?
All information is good news.
Oh, one item I forgot.
Okay.
Here's something that's scary.
Oh, great.
Relatively speaking.
Yeah, I know, on a scale.
The federal government last Friday, when they came up with the unemployment numbers for the Commonwealth, once a year, they give an update on the employment of the year before, which would be the graduating class of colleges, four-year colleges, in this case, 2014. Of those students who graduated in four years, only 2.5% got jobs in their majors. And the student debt in the United States now is 1.2 trillion dollars, which is 6% of the national debt. And if I could give a personal commentary to every guidance department in the state, if a kid says they're interested in college, ask them three questions. What do you wanna be? Is there a market for it? And how do you pay for it? And if those questions aren't answered, and I'd like to see the statistics, which I know, by the way, of graduates of Silver Lake in the last 10 years that have finished four years of college in four years, or two years in junior college in two years. The statistics are very interesting. Thank you. And they can be found, by the way.
Negotiations, employee relations? The chair is not currently here. I know there is a meeting scheduled with the support staff for next week. Pilgrim Area Collaborative? Maureen's not here. Jason, would you care to give an update?
No.
The PAC is currently still awaiting ground to be broken on the expansion of their Pilgrim Area Collaborative's academy down in the registry commercial lot. Unfortunately, the snow situation we dealt with here in district also impacted the construction. Moving forward with negotiations with our professionals and with the professional staff, and the budget subcommittee started working on their fiscal '16 budget.
Thank you. Policy? No meeting. Revenue Subcommittee? Our chair is not here, but we did not have a meeting.
We did a vote sometime. We did a vote.
Safety Subcommittee, I do not believe has met yet. Treasurer's report?
We have 13 warrants circulating for a total of $2,135,499. We have two payroll warrants circulating for a total of $1,392,121.7 for a grand total of $3,527,570.7.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Union 31? There has been no meeting since the joint meeting. School District Business, Assistant Superintendent?
Thank you. I wanted to let you know that Silver Lake, Halifax, Kingston, and Clifton is up for their coordinated program review. This is an audit that is done by the state. And unfortunately for us, or I guess it depends on how you look at it, this is our year. So, for the coordinated program review, they've now split it over two years. The areas that they are looking at this year is done on a new program. It's called a web-based management system, where you upload all the documents online for the different categories. The thing to remember is, we have to do it for all four districts simultaneously. So, the two areas that are being looked at this year are civil rights and special education. In civil rights, there's over 30 documents times four for each district. And in special education, there are over 60 documents times four. It is a huge undertaking. I'm working on the civil rights. I have to say Melissa Farrell, our new K6 curriculum coordinator, is phenomenal in helping me with it. She's an organizational queen, so she is definitely my life support at this point. Next year, they will be coming in district, and they will be reviewing Title I, CBTE, our Career and Technical Program, our English Language Learner Program, which is interesting and difficult for us, because we have to meet the same criteria as Boston in terms of the expectations for servicing our students who are English as a second language. They also will be reviewing some sped records of our students. So, I just wanted to let you know that that is in process. It is a large undertaking, it is extremely time-consuming. The state will review all of our records, they'll make recommendations for us, there will be report, it will be public, and it will be tying us up for this spring for the web-based. And then next year, it will also be very, very time-consuming for our staff. So, there'll be a few things going on. But I'll keep you posted on it. There will be some postings that will go in the paper also, when they come to visit.
What's the timing of the joint, like, you're mentioning it now, do we respond over the summer months, or is it during when school is in session?
They've changed it since I was here six years ago when we did it, and it was all paper-based.
I remember that, yeah.
Yeah, it was painful for the trees then, on top of the paperwork. I mean, it was just really ridiculous. This is a new system they've put in place, I think it's only the second or third year that they've used this. It is much more, it is much easier, but it's also new. So, documents that we haven't used, that you don't use that often, but you have to have on your record. Some of them have to be updated, everything has to be turned into a PDF, it then has to be put into a file. It's just a different way of thinking and a different way of doing. Being a little bit older, I'm still kind of used to the paper. Luckily, Melissa's a little younger, and she's doing much better with technology piece. So, we're a nice balance. But it is quite a process. So, the first section is almost a self-assessment is what they're calling it. So, we submit everything online, we know what the criteria are. So, we have, in the process of making sure we put it all together, if we didn't have it, you have an opportunity to develop it. Which is what we're doing right now. So, we're doing very well with civil rights, and I know Mary's working very hard with her staff on the special education piece. And then next year, when they come in, that's when it's very involved. Because Title I alone, you know, having been the Title I director, is really a lot of paperwork. It's really just a tremendous amount of paperwork. English Language Learners, again, we have to meet the exact same criteria as Boston. Jim, Jim and myself, and Elliot, Steve and Michaela, we were all at a required course. That's why we were a few minutes late, the Jelted English Emergent Course for Administrators. So, we have to do the exact same thing that Boston has to do. Our ELL population varies, but it's anywhere from five to a dozen students. This kind of movement in now, but we have to do the exact same thing and meet the same criteria. So, it is a large undertaking.
Madam Chair, to the Assistant Superintendent, have we ever had to do the new cafeteria audit, food audit?
We've done...
There's a new one coming, and one of my schools, not far from where you live, had one, and it is a nightmare. So, I'm preparing you just in case that comes down. You talk about paperwork, they grind it out, but I'm told it's a disaster.
We've been, yeah, we've been audited on a regular basis between all the schools. It seems like every year at least one of them is being audited. And either we've gotten used to it, but I suspect it's more that the audit has changed.
I understand the First Lady has helped to coordinate it, help weave it in that.
Yeah, because while it's exactly been thoroughly, it hasn't been painful.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I do have a question. For the coordinated review visits next year, I know that we're having a change in our special ed administration. What are we gonna do for continuity there, just to make sure we have our ducks in a row?
Work very hard?
Good answer.
I wanted to update everyone on the searches that we are currently... John and I are coordinating for the Assistant Superintendent and the Special Education Director. You have a golden rod, I think is the official color of it, it kind of reminds me of Daniel's.
Pleasure.
Thank you. One side of it lists the people who are on the search committee for the Assistant Superintendent, and on the other side is a search committee for the special educator. I'll just take a quick moment and read through it for the TV audience. From the town of Kingston, we have our KIS adjustment counselor, Judy Mason, and Kristen McGonigal, a grade-two teacher. From Clifton, we have the Denit Elementary School principal, Peter Benito. From Halifax, we have Kane Bowdre, our assistant principal, and Jessica Shaw, a grade-six teacher. We have our K6 curriculum coordinator, Melissa Farrell, representing all the elementaries. From the Silver Lake Regional School District, secondary level, we have Elliot Glass, our director of CTE, because it's unusual for a district to have a CTE program, so we wanted to make sure to include him. Mr. Mulcahy, our high school principal. Kevin Sawyer, our math curriculum coordinator. From the middle school, we have Kathy Benash, our science teacher, long-term science teacher, representing the school committees, both on an elementary and secondary level. Our very own Jason Frazier, who's doing a great job. And I'm actually very excited that Mary McKinnon, a Kingston parent and also the chair of the Kingston Finance Committee, has joined us. I wanted to make, we wanted to make sure that the Assistant Superintendent realized the financial implications of several decisions. So, we reached out, you'll notice on both sides, to some of our town officials to include them in the process. For the Director of Special Education?
Okay, excuse me, could I just make a point of the Assistant Superintendent?
Sure.
If I could do it. And I've kind of questioned the process, so I just wanna give my thought, because I think the school committee should have been more involved in this whole setup thing. But I just wanna let it be known, I myself, and I can only speak for me, I would want a business-oriented person, and also, I would want to at least interview three finals. Sometimes that hasn't happened in the past, but I'm just gonna give my opinion to the committee that they can give that consideration, because I do think we should have an opportunity to interview more than one person.
I believe, John, I like to see definitely more than one person represented for interviews.
In terms of the search committee for the Special Education Director, from Kingston, we have our elementary school principal, Paula Bartosiak. From the intermediate school, we have Marlene Daly, who's a sped teacher. From Clifton, we have Christine Margolini, who is our Denit psychologist. From Halifax, we have Marlene Ebert, who is a special education teacher. Again, the K6 curriculum coordinator. From Silver Lake Regional, on the secondary level, we have our new special ed department head, Michelle Boudreaux. John Barofolo, our director of guidance. Michaela Gill, our high school assistant principal. CPAC stands for Special Education Parent Advisory Council, and that is Greg Bloom, who's a parent. Our school committee representative is Maureen Springer. In terms of community representative, Maureen Gahan, who is the director of Pilgrim Area Collaborative, was kind enough to offer her assistance for us, which is wonderful. And we also have Kim Roy, who is a Halifax parent and the board of selectmen chair. And then John and I will be serving on both of these committees. So, I just wanted to let you know what the makeup of the committees were. And we are working, John and I are working diligently to try to have the positions filled. Some people in their contracts have a 60-day timeframe, notice that they have to give. So, we're moving as quickly as we can to try to have everybody in place by the July 1st line.
What's the environment for both positions right now in the job market? Do you have a sense for that?
A little bit. In terms of the number of applicants for the Assistant Superintendent position, we had 54 applicants. For the Special Ed Director, we had 28 applicants. We are having nine people come in for interviews, starting tomorrow, actually, for the Assistant Superintendent position. And then we will be reviewing, we're currently reviewing, because the special ed position just closed on Wednesday, yesterday. So, we're gonna give the administrators time to do the initial screening, and then we'll do a paper screening with the whole committee the Tuesday after vacation week. With losing that week, it is making it very difficult to try to get this moving forward in as timely a fashion as possible. The hope is, I believe, for both John and I, to try to bring the candidates forward when we have our next joint meeting, which I assume would be sometime towards the end of May. And if it's the committee's pleasure to bring forward more than one, then that's what we'll do.
If I could, central office positions have become more and more difficult to fill, because it's a small, smaller candidate pool. I'm sure you've read the articles in the paper about filling superintendent positions. And that sort of has a trickle-down effect on assistant superintendents. There are less of them looking to change. It takes less time to become a superintendent, I guess I'd say, than it used to. And as for special education, it's a very, it's a very difficult, I mean, it's a very difficult position to fill, it's a very difficult position to have. Specialized licenses for it, and it is a high-stress job. And a job that has not a small level of burnout towards winter. And so, a very difficult position to find, but I'm sure we will find qualified people, fortunately. Silver Lake has a reputation for being a good employer, and their communities have a reputation for being good towns to work in, so that helps.
So, out of the 54 applicants, you have the nine interviews for the Assistant Superintendent. Did the search committee boil that down to the nine interviews, or how did that process work?
What we did was, it was posted on school spring, and we had all the administrators in the district review the 54 candidates. Not all 54 of them were qualified. Some people have it set up in school spring that basically any opening that happens, their name must go in, because some of them were really quite interesting on their backgrounds, not necessarily what we would be looking for. So, the administrators screened it down to the top 20, and then we printed out paper copies, and I had to apologize to the trees, but we printed out paper copies of the top 20 candidates, brought those forward to the screening committee. The screening committee then read through all 20 of the top candidates. They picked, based on the job description, the criteria we were looking for in some discussions, who they wanted to bring in for interviews. And we sent around a tally sheet, and then the people who got the most tallies were the ones who are coming in for the interviews. So, I think it was a pretty...
Robust.
Yeah, it actually was robust. I think we did our due diligence in terms of looking through the candidates, and I think we had a lot of people involved in it. There were 14 administrators who weighed in, bring it down to 20, and then there were 14 of us doing the paper screening.
And the special ed search committee, you had 28 applicants, have you arranged any interviews for that?
Not yet, it just closed yesterday. So, we're going to give the administrators a week, like we did last time, to read through, pick the candidates. With school vacation week, it really is making it very difficult to find the time to talk, I have to be honest with you, because no one's around for school vacation week. So, the Tuesday after school vacation week, the special ed committee will be meeting at the middle school library to be reviewing their top candidates. We won't have 20 top candidates out of 28. I don't know yet what number we'll have, I'm hoping for a dozen. But we're still kind of working our way through all the applicants. We need to, especially with both of these positions, make sure people are licensed appropriately. The last thing I have is actually something that is good news and interesting. I received an invitation from the Plymouth area Chamber of Commerce to see if we would be interested in learning about some of the programs that they offer. And I sent out an email to Mr. Mulcahy and Elliot Glass and John Barofolo, our director of guidance and director of CTE, to see if anyone might be interested in attending this informational session. And Elliot and John both chose to go. And in reporting back, there are some very interesting opportunities that we're just learning about. The Plymouth area Chamber of Commerce has these grant-funded enrollments in local certificate programs that we have not participated in before. They're offered through Massasoia Community College and Cape Cod Community College. It's called a college jumpstart program, and they're designed to help get recent high school graduates into careers upon completion of certificate programs. And they can be completed in as little as 13 weeks. The courses are varied, but they include EMTs, veterinary assistant, pharmacy technician, marine technician, hydraulic operator license, et cetera. marine technician, hydraulic operator license, et cetera. They're going to work with the Plymouth Area Chamber of Commerce to try to schedule a presentation for our seniors prior to the ones who don't have college plans yet. And depending on the program, the student cost is only between $50 to $75. So it's really quite a wonderful opportunity for, for many of our students. And some of the courses are offered in Plymouth. I do have a link if you're interested. Elliot had sent me sort of a summary of it. The chamber's mission includes improving the future quality of the region's workforce by assisting local educational partners. And in planning for next fall, the, the chamber has access to the local business community in a way that we haven't had before. And they discussed the idea of, of a career fair. It is something that is a huge undertaking. We may not be able to do it right away, but we're beginning some new planning stages, and I think it's just very exciting for our students. Again, to Mr. Creed's point, college is not for everyone. The debt that many young students come up with, where these would give some of our students who maybe aren't part necessarily of vocational program, but give them a certificate where they would be employable, you know, and a good job to start with. So it's a, it sounds like a great opportunity, and I was really excited that it looks like it's something that we're going to be able to help our students benefit from.
How many positions? How many students would be allowed to participate?
There isn't a number listed. They didn't, they didn't limit it. So it's, you know, I think it's more a question of the students applying, going through the process, but it's, it's a nice...
It's great.
It is, it's a wonderful opportunity. I was very excited.
It is a program we've had in the Plymouth schools for a period of time, and just opening it up to us.
Thanks. Thank you.
Director of Business Services, Healy.
I just wanted to mention on the warrants that you looked at tonight, there was one rather large warrant, it was a warrant that was titled Debt Warrant D O 96 for $1,248,710. That is for our debt, pay debt principal and interest payment that's due May 15th. We do it early just in case anything happens. And as we just note, the meetings may be changed for next month, so I'm glad that we did take care of this month, but we will not wire the money until the day, until it's actually due. So I just wanted to mention that, so we make principal payments once a year and interest payments twice a year, November and May of the month that we do. On tonight's financial, it's included a new package on the new sheets. We're in the last quarter of the year, this is very exciting. The weather has thrown us a curve, but hopefully we've taken care of that with the, the front term we would need with that. Tonight I'm going to focus on some of the newer deficits as opposed to some of the ones that we've had since the beginning of the year. If you look on page one, my favorite account, right in the middle of the page, it's the postage account for the superintendent's office. We are truly running out of postage, so we did have to get some of the postage for our machine to get us through until we can make the first payment in the new year. And we traditionally do that somewhere between July and August. We just need to make sure we get through until that point in time. The next item I wanted to bring to your attention is on page two of the detailed contract and services. This is under middle school. What has happened is many of our machines are under, they're fairly new, so they had three years of free maintenance, and they have fallen out of that maintenance time. So now we have to pay for the maintenance of those machines. Those machines do an awful lot of work, so we pay for the maintenance agreement so that if anything does happen, the company comes out immediately and takes care of the machines. So we're showing the deficit there, so I have to see if we bunch into that for next year. If not, I have to put a big note out that we need to make sure we cover that for any of the older machines. The next item I wanted to bring to your attention is on page five. There's a new deficit in the health supplies area in the high school. It's a small one, it's only under $28, I believe, but there were just some supplies that the nurse's office needed, and they couldn't get, they couldn't wait till the end of the year. So they had to take care of those items just to get through the end of June. The next big one is on page seven. This is in our contracted services under the maintenance area. This is what we're seeing as a result of the snow removal. The two accounts that have a deficit are the accounts that we use to take care of most of the expenses. The first account is the contracted services area for the middle school, and the two accounts down in someone for the high school. The reason you're not seeing that full impact of the deficit there right now is that we still have many things scheduled between now and the end of the year that were already planned to go through that account. So this deficit, that will continue to grow, and by the end of the year, we will see the full impact of the $160,000 in snow removal that we hadn't expected. So right now it's just showing you at this point in time, but there are many other items scheduled through that account to get us to the end of the year. And then the last one is on page eight, under the special education area. The very last account has a deficit of $350. That is the shared cost account for the special education area. It's one of the accounts where they pay their, the rent for the building space that they use out of. But we, we usually split them between two accounts, but when the invoice was done, it was one invoice paid out of one account. So you'll see the account that follows that is the mirror account to that, and that still has a surplus, and that would be able to absorb the deficit here. Are there any questions?
Madam Chair, at one point, Christine, will you be asking the committee's approval to change line items so you can come out even?
We can do that for the, I think we did that last year around the time of the close on, so that we knew exactly what all those balances were.
Okay. Thank you.
Christine, I have a question.
Okay.
How are we moving forward with the, the fines for the schools?
There's an awful lot of paperwork that has to be done for that, and we have to get a lot of information from the towns. So the information that came to us has been sent out to the towns, and now we're just waiting to get all of those items out.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Superintendent.
Oh, I really don't have much to say.
Oh, yeah, John. You've got a heck of a job, John.
Thank you. I have included the 1516 budget on it. Just to be clear, it stares at a placeholder in case there's a need to talk about the upcoming year. I know of nothing that we need to talk about, but I'll leave it to the committee with any That may be the quickest report I have ever made.
It's all quiet.
There you go. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, new business. School committee letterhead, and I will let Mr. Frazier speak to this, as he was the one who asked to put it on.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I actually want to have a dialogue with the committee to see if we believed that we need a letterhead that is exclusively from the school committee and not necessarily from the administrative offices. And also maybe to consider what protocols we would need to put in place if we did.
Right up, please, Jason.
I was thinking what kind of protocols we would need to institute if we did develop our own letterhead that was not coming from central administration. It would be a letterhead for the Silver Lake Regional School Committee to send out correspondence, and what kind of protocols we would maybe want to have in place if we did indeed move forward with a letterhead from the committee.
Madam Chair, I can tell you that the, the school committees that have their own, and the five or six that I work for are limited, but it's, it's always the name of the superintendent, and if they have an assistant superintendent, then you know, the chairperson of the committee and the names of the committee, if there's a communication to go out. But of the school system that I have, not many have their own. Doesn't mean you can't, but they don't.
No, it was just something I would like to, to hear further comment on, whether or not we do need one, if the current method is always worked and can continue to work
Occasionally, we, I mean, we do send out thank you letters. We're sending out congratulations to Mr. Bracken. We are sending things out, they go out on Silver Lake Letterhead now, it's a regular letterhead. If you were asked to send out a thank you letter for a donation, it would go out on your own letterhead, but thank you from the school committee, is that...
That's right.
...the way it is.
Everybody in the pool, I think.
As far as criteria goes, I think if we did have something, it would still be something the committee agreed to do. We said, we agreed to send a letter to Mr. Bracken, we agreed to send letters to people that, you know, each time we do that, we agree to send a letter, so, and maybe you'd give the chair the discretion to, to use it at the chair's discretion if the chair needed to send out a letter, but that might be the criteria, if, if we wanted to go with something along those lines.
Sounds like the current method, though, is working well. Just wanted to give you the heads up, I will be sending out a letter as an individual by referencing my position to Plimpton representatives at both the legislative branches of our state office, discussing some of the things we recently went through as a committee, with the Department of Revenue's assessment to my town in particular, and also the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, foundation budget constraints that we're finding eventually may cross paths in the future.
Well, I mean, to, to that end, there, there's no reason, I could see that the committee couldn't take a vote and get behind you and say, these are coming, these are coming from the committee. You're certainly welcome as an individual, but we'd be, you know, if, if you could bring those letters in, either read them into the record or pass them out to us, we all agree, say, this is a great letter, let's send it off on behalf of the school committee. Then, you know, administration can send it on, on behalf of us, but it would still have the, the regional school letterhead on it. So if that would, I don't know whether you want to do something on your own, whether you want us to get behind you. I mean, it would only, if you could bring something in that we could all read and get behind, then, then we'd get behind it. If, if the committee didn't want to, then, you know...
I appreciate any editorial comments you could make. Thank you very much.
Begging you shall receive, huh?
I second what Joe's thoughts are, I think, coming from the school committee. And I don't have a problem reading the letter and making some editorial comments myself.
Appreciate it, thank you.
But that's how we've done things in the past.
I, I just didn't want to proceed, especially as a freshman member, down the path without consulting my colleagues and doing due diligence.
Are you willing to hold that letter till the next meeting?
Yes. Thank you. Do you want us to get behind this now? I mean, we did the other...
I don't mind if you guys get it.
Absolutely. Or we still may, actually. It's about, it's, we take it.
There's entertainment.
School committee use of social media? We had, had a brief discussion about how we, if school committee should use social media. This is going back a while ago now. And you had made the suggestion that it might be a way.
I, I think this was in the, the vein of trying to get our message out more frequently, more clearly, with more detail, to as many taxpayers as we can, because I think we always struggle every budget season with not really having enough people educated early enough, et cetera. And we, we live in an age of, of social media. So, you know, I don't know if we want to consider a website, a Facebook page. I don't know the best way to approach the public, but I think every year is getting more and more difficult, and I think it's necessary at this point to find a way to get what our, what we're doing every month when, when we're here, what we're doing through the budget process, what our priorities are, what our struggles are, what we may have to give up if, you know, a certain budget goes a certain way, to try and get people on board with what the school's needs are and priorities are. I know, for instance, there is a Facebook page for the graduating class of 2018 that I think I'm a member of, and it's used a bunch of different ways, but it, it is a way for a lot of people to hear conversation and participate in conversation over certain topics. So I throw it out there, again, I, I don't pretend to be the most savvy technical person in, in this, and I don't know Facebook versus Twitter, and, you know, don't ask me to hashtag blah, 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 or something, I honestly couldn't tell you. So I throw it out there for ideas. I, I think we have to do something, folks, that reaches the masses.
Robin Kincaid, what was that that she did? Didn't we, Robin had something going. What was that all about?
That was just to post...
Okay, the only, you think you got to be careful of, in what you do, I mean, I'm an expert on social media, like I am.
I was hoping you'd...
Yeah, I took the course.
Absolutely.
But Mr. Creed, I remember some very good information coming out of your seminar at the association conference down in Hyannis, on this very top.
But, but seriously, we got to be careful that it doesn't become political, because then, then you run into problems. We can't be a political force, and that's, that's, you got to be very, very careful with that.
And, and help me draw the distinction, John, because I wouldn't want to cross the line, obviously we wouldn't want to cross the line, but how, how do you then get the current climate of the school and the needs and the priorities? How do you get that out there?
Well, yeah, but first of all, the, the education political base in Massachusetts is 17 percent. That's all it is. Eighty-three percent of the people who vote in this state have no connection with public schools other than a tax vote. That statistic has been consistent since 1985. The difficulty is, is whether people, for example, Kingston's town meeting is, the first meeting is Saturday, in which our snow and ice thing will be on the agenda. Okay, if we have 200 people at the meeting, I bet you 10 percent will be school people. As a matter of fact, some of the people that work for the schools, whether it's Silver Lake or Marshfield or anyplace else, they don't show up. It's a very difficult thing to educate. What I'm protecting the committee against is that we can't be in a political advocacy on things that are paid for out of the budget. That's the, and again, you really don't know until you try something and somebody challenges you, then some judge will make a decision. But then you could be in worse shape than not doing it at all, depending on the luck of the draw. So I, education is important. I mean, we have this cable, people come as they do. Usually Catherine Gerani is here, you know, and that's the type of thing. How you change people's interests? I can't answer that. Don't forget, only 40 percent of the people in the country voted for President of the United States. 60 percent of the people didn't vote, even though they were registered. I mean, so it's not just a problem here, it's a problem everywhere. And I, but I don't want us to get in trouble if we get caught politicizing what we're looking for, because then you're in a different game, and I don't know how that...
It's very easy to politicize, it's very easy to politicize, still just make a comment and it could be taken in the wrong.
So if, so then you kind of lean against something that's interactive like Facebook, but a website where you're posting, you know, a fact sheet. Here's our budget history for the last seven years, here's what we've given up over the last seven years. Here's our capital plan. These are our priorities. If, if it's fact-based and you're not dialoguing back and forth.
But, for example, you take communities, it's more difficult with a regional committee. But you take, the elementary in Kingston, this year has an override question. You do. For your group? That's an override question, and, you know, and, and the point is, can, the school committee, elementary, could urge people a yes vote, but they couldn't pay for posters supporting a yes vote. It's a very thin line of what you can do. And John, if you disagree, say it, but it's, it's difficult.
We can't even, we can't print stuff and send it home, because...
It is, right, it is confusing. Having said that, somebody mentioned Robin Kincaid, a school committee member, who helped move us into having a webpage. Now, I think at this point in time, the webpage is so old, 1990. It's, the world has moved past that. You can put fact-based information on it, but you can't advocate if it becomes a ballot question. A town meeting question is a lot of latitude. Soon it becomes a ballot question, it now becomes covered by a different state agency. And you can't, you can't use public resources at all to advocate in a ballot, on a ballot question. Fortunately, something like Facebook is free. There, there isn't a cost to set up your own Facebook page. Now, the Halifax Elementary School Committee set up their very own website and had their very own, and, and they paid for the domain name, I think it cost them 20 bucks a year, not a lot of money. That would allow them, if they wanted to advocate, because they weren't using public resources, it was coming from... That would allow them, if they wanted to advocate, because they weren't using public resources, it was coming from the school committee members themselves. Kingston at one point set up, used, purchased a domain name as I remember it, so that they could do that as well. Facebook, free to set up, free to set up your page. I mean, the issue I think you have is at a committee is, you need to come to consensus if you're going to take a position on behalf of the committee, if you're going to engage in two-way conversation. If you're just using it as a place to say, here's what we voted on, here's what we believe in, and here's why. I mean, being why that is expressed at the meeting. Yeah, you get, I believe you get to do that, whether it is a town meeting question, just general information or a ballot question, as long as you're using your own resources, and as long as you're not tasking administration to develop specialized information for you that would not generally be available to the public in large.
And I'd just like to add, you know, recent meetings, we've had a few people. And with due respect to a fine visitor, which we welcome, but our meetings have been the second Thursday of the month since I've been on the committee, and probably longer than that. You know, how you get people's interest? I'm not sure, and I have no problem doing anything that's within the guidelines, website or put it on TV or whatever, but how do you get people interested? And that is, you know, I mean, we don't draw many people, and we don't exclude anybody. They can come, I mean, Jim I know with his family will be there on Saturday morning. I'm going to be a little late, but I'll be there. But Jim's been there every town meeting since I've known him. And yet, if we draw 200 people on Saturday, it's big, and by the time it ends, if we get a quorum, get enough for a quorum. Wouldn't you say that's fair, Jim?
Yeah.
So how you instill people's interest? You know, I'm not sure how you do that. But I'm not against it doing anything, it's within the guidelines. I mean, Robin had good ideas on the website and so forth, but it's.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know, I think it's something we have to continue, and I appreciate those comments. I do think it's something that we continue to think about, because we get to town meeting, people can't grasp what we're trying to do and why we're trying to do it in 15, 20 minutes before they have to vote on a budget or, you know, some sort of special circumstance. We haven't had a lot of luck, the few times we've tried to get money above and beyond what, you know, our budget is asked to be constrained to. And I think the next couple of years are going to be even tougher if the crystal ball that the finance committees are predicting is true. So I think we, I think we have to think as a committee about trying to get traction with the public somehow, is my thought. So I guess I would ask to leave it as an ongoing periodic discussion.
I don't see any, well, I've just been around this business a long time. You know, it's just, it's just difficult.
Yeah.
I mean, I think Ed Desnay at one of the recent meetings talked about getting rid of football, or whatever he said, our sports. You know, that might draw crap, you know, because then they have, there's something they can touch.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
I mean, and when I was on the Marshfield Committee, the superintendent wanted to get rid of hockey, and we drew 750 people. And they weren't interested in biology, I can guarantee you that. Sorry, Joey, what they want.
I have gotten, over the years, more phone calls from parents who are upset about coaches than I have about teachers.
And I don't know if that speaks well for our teachers, that we're not getting complaints?
I always like to think it's because I think they're all excellent, but I do know that when we were building this building, and both buildings represented $75 million worth of investment by the communities. I had people who would say, so tell me about the athletic fields. What's the gym going to look like? I used to think that if I put in 35 acres of playing fields and a multi-story car park, people would have been thrilled. I never once had somebody say to me, gee, can you show me the science lab? What's the equipment that's going to be in the language lab?
I told you the dome stadium was the answer, I told you.
So there's a lot of truth to that.
But is it that you take that for granted and hope he could have some?
Again, that was the attitude I had, with great faith and confidence in the great committee, and thought that, of course, it would be state-of-the-art, but maybe a bit a little shaky on the athletic facilities, so we needed some oversight on that.
Joe, you have a comment?
Just quickly on the social media thing, again, it was mentioned, it was mentioned that Kingston School Committee had their own website, and they did, they paid for it themselves. And I think over the course of a couple of years, maybe got 30 hits, and 20 of them were us just trying to see what was there. We had all kinds of explanations about how Chapter 70 worked, what was our impact over the past 10 years. Mr. Milburn made up charts, all that stuff was on there, and again, maybe 10 people came and looked at. So it's possible something with Facebook or something where all you have to do is press a like button, or something else where you can, it'll feed you into something like that, as opposed to just putting a website out there that says, we're here, you know, you've got, people have to find you. But it's possible on Facebook, they'll be linked into something like that. If people around town, you know, you can, you know, they have town bulletin boards and something like that, so you can go onto a town bulletin board. It may draw people in, but I've never done it, so I've only heard about it.
I don't mind keeping on the agenda for further discussion. Okay, let's go.
All right, both business, administration building? Well, I know they had a meeting, but the chair isn't here, so he's going to have to wait till the next meeting.
Is that Mark?
Yes.
He's probably discussing the things in Florida to get a good insight to what people are experiencing.
Superintendent was there, he didn't give us a brief.
Jason Fraser and myself were both there, and very quickly, we had a meeting on Thursday before Good Friday. It was at 5:00 at night, and people showed up, so I was pretty busy. Jason Fraser was there, myself, Mark Buonopone, Rick Springer was there, Rick is a builder and was also involved in the Denham Elementary School construction, he was on that building committee. And Paul Armstrong, the building inspector of Kingston, came and volunteered this time. We reviewed some of the rooms, and Bob Hodge, thank you, and Bob Hodge, your former administrator and resident of Halifax was there. And Bob brought cookies, so he was a very popular person. There you go. On a serious note, we looked at the building that we currently have. There was a lot of input about the issues and perhaps what might be chatterfully called the deficiencies that go with the building. And the building itself is over 50 years old, and it was built by Silver Lake students, and not structurally sound. The way you would have built a building in 1960 is not the way you'd build a building in 2015. There was some table talk about the cost of bringing the building into compliance in current building codes, the cost of replacing it with a stick-built building or a modular building. We did have some information that went back to the building construction period here at Silver Lake, where we had a massing diagram that talked about the total square foot that it would take, that we would expect to have for a total staff of 15. Now, there's only 11 in the building right now, but let's remember this next building, if we get a next building, is like the last building 50 years from now, what will the needs be? We had some costs that came from RS Means Books. RS Means is a recognized cost calculation company that is used by many, many people. Paul Armstrong agreed to take some of that basic information, he has access to that, it's an expensive subscription service, and run some numbers and see what we're talking about, if in fact we, again, want the renovation construction. We also said, gee, there's some other options for space, it is rental space, it is, do we have additional, extra space at Silver Lake? The answer to that's no at this point in time. So that discussion, discussion about what do we do with the existing building, can it be repurposed for another public purpose? Given its location is probably not a large market for it, since it sits right next to a large parking lot in a school that has 1,800 people there. So that was it, we will be meeting again and sort of moving forward with that.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Seeing no other business that I know of, I would move that we adjourn, reminding people that our May meeting will be May 21st, 2015, at 7 o'clock at the middle school.
I have directions.
What do you say?
Be my first meeting at your building.
I'd like to second you.
Second please.
Second.
I'm the bidler.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, yes?
Madam Chair, I have one thing I forgot to mention, this is very important. The chili cook-off is this Saturday, April 11th, at Kingston Collection, it's only the Independence Mall, starting at 11:00 a.m. And our students from Culinary had their own internal contest, chili contest. They had people come in and taste it, you know, me, Mr. Glass, Mr. Grofflow.
Simon, you have to do it.
Simon, it was tough, but they voted, we got to vote, and they voted as well as students, and we had a student winner that I'll mention after the Saturday's competition. So if you can't make it up to the Kingston Collection at 11:00 a.m. on Saturday, they are.
If I'm not at a town meeting, Jim and I both get shot. And John doesn't get his snow and ice money.
But I'd be remiss if I didn't mention it to the public on TV, so. Thank you very much.
All right, but since we are not in open session, before we all leave, I would like to wish Mr. Creed a very happy birthday on Thursday.